Please.
Here.
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 Thank you. Next is approval of the minutes.
Don't move.
Do I have a second? And a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Goins, and second by Thompson. Okay. Alfred?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
I mean, yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
And Hughes?
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Next on the agenda is report from the mayor, county mayor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. First of all, I'd like to call on our recreation director, Andy Lockhart, to give us an update of the Miracle League that started this past weekend.
Thank you, Mayor. Bradley Park Recreation had the honor to host our first-ever Bradley County Miracle League Saturday at Blue Springs Park. We have about fifty-two participants on six teams, ages from five to seventy-four. So, we had a great day. We started about ten, had opening ceremonies, we had a sound system going, had a big picture on the field of all the teams, called all the names, then had a three-game. It was really exciting to see all of them get a chance to participate. So, we're gonna be doing that for about the next five Saturdays at Blue Springs. We're actually playing on a Robert Romeangrfield, former commissioner here. That's our middle field at Blue Springs. So, we'd love to have anybody to come out, come out and volunteer, or just come out and get to see these guys have an opportunity to play. Last week, we had, actually, it was the Cleveland Baseball Mission had their eight- and ten-year-old team out for buddies for the participants. And I think next week, may have Lee University's lacrosse team that come in, help out. So, but we start at ten, we just have three back-to-back games, but it's really exciting and really cool to get out there and see them. Future plans for our Miracle League is a former commission gave us some land at Elrod Park. So, we've got the, we're getting the preliminary drawings and stuff in so we can start looking to get grant money. Carolyn Kimsey is leading that. She has a son that participates, and she's been at the forefront of getting this moving for us. So, once we get that rolling, hopefully, we'll have a field for them, league ground, some open areas, a lot of good things happening for our Miracle League here in Bradley County.
Have they any plans for any lights out there, Minus Road? Somebody might answer.
Hopefully, in the future.
Everybody who's got the money can answer.
Commissioner Hughes.
Andy, I'd heard about the, I literally wasn't able to make it to the meeting, which are the games that day, so I felt terrible about it. But I have had more calls and more compliments over the job that you guys done with starting the Miracle League than anything I've heard of in a long time. So, you guys apparently are doing just a really great job, and thank you for looking at it or working with her.
When are the games? Are they Saturdays?
So, they're Saturdays, like I said, down at Blue Springs Park. The first games start at ten. They usually last about an hour. So, ten, eleven, fifteen, and directly after.
Commissioner Thompson.
I never did get my answer.
Right now, we're talking about Blue Springs, and they got lights, so we're proud of them. Wonderful program, and I'm sure the participants really enjoyed it. I only heard good news from what all went on out there last Saturday. So, we look forward to more and hopefully, one day, having their own field for this. So, any other questions of Andy?
We want to, I know on behalf of Commissioner Alfred and I, we want to thank you for scratching the dirt out there on the pickleball court. At least we got something moving on that.
I never did get my answer on them lights.
Thank you, Andy. We have representatives from Senator Hagerty's office and also Congressman Chuck Fleishman's office with us here today. Lakin Shattuck with Hagerty's office back there, and Gracie White with Chuck Fleishman's office. We appreciate you all being here today. Thank you. The only other thing I have, along with the chairman, is committee appointments and updates, the ones that come under my purview, I guess you would say. You have a list of those in front of you. All of them, most all of them are reappointments. There's a few appointments on there also. But if you can, you'd like to do them as a group, that would be fine. I'm respectful. I ask for your confirmation, please.
Do I have a? Commissioner Winters made the motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Goins made the second. Any discussion? No discussion, call the roll, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Appreciate it. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Hughes made the motion.
Thank you.
Second from Commissioner Thompson. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alfred?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake? Collins?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you very much. Prior to starting the reports from the committees and districts, I would like to tell you before you, you have a copy of the Bradley County Commission Internal Standing Committees effective today. And I ask that this be placed in the minutes, if you don't mind, please. And I also, we had the Tennessee County Commissioners Association met at the Elks Lodge. We had the mayor and twelve of the fourteen county commissioners. I think that's remarkable attendance. It was enjoyable, enjoyable time. Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Papers here. Last week, the Cleveland Bradley Chamber of Commerce added Danielle Seals as the new Director of Workforce Development. As a critical member of the economic development team, she will support the existing business community of Bradley County and work collaboratively with the partners to develop and advance workforce initiatives that strengthen and expand the talent pool of our region. As we all know, that is something that is needed here in Bradley County. Also, Ms. Seals will play a pivotal role in the growth and partnership between local education, such as the Pi Center, and the surrounding work, and the surrounding workforce. She will coordinate and direct programs to make these efforts possible. This role is vital for the success of bringing new jobs and creating the best workforce possible for Bradley County. I know Ms. Seals will work great with area business leaders and local schools to enhance education and possibilities for future workforce. Congratulations, Danielle. We look forward to seeing all of what you accomplish. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Ledford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good day today. I want to say a few things. Saturday, September the tenth, was a great day for me. Forty years at Tenova, started out Bradley Memorial. Done a little visit last Wednesday night to the Hannah Farm. Some of my supporters down there, if you've never watched them milk cows, an experience, need to go do it. Once again, I'd like to thank the people of the sixth district for voting me in as your sixth district county commissioner. And at this time, if I can, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call Dan Rawls. He'd like to speak for a moment.
Mr. Rawls. You know the routine, Dan.
You don't need my address, right?
No, I don't think we need your address.
Good day to y'all. There's a couple of things that I find just, it's kind of unbelievable. Just back in May, we amended Rule Eight, and that amending of Rule Eight actually increased the transparency within the commission through the committee system, which would make those committees available to the taxpayers via the internet and via the system that we use to televise these meetings. The motion before you today to amend, that motion decreases transparency, clearly and without a doubt. And the problem with that situation is, is that this seems to be coming from a newly-elected head department head, you know, and I don't think that the inconveniencing of a department head should supersede the inconvenience and the lack of transparency that this brings forward to the taxpayers, because they're the ones who pay the bills. And this level of transparency, I don't know if y'all have observed the type of viewership that this is getting. The commission meetings is actually increasing, you know, so this gives people the opportunity, you know, to watch what's going on without having to leave their home, you know, mothers who have children at home, all of these things. It allows them to see the meetings here, and you know, I've received a lot of positive input from that. I was in here the other week when this was presented, and I think it was, to me, it appeared that the presenter of the motion appeared to like add a little bit of confusion to the reality of the existing rule. No one, no one who, you know, listened to that, several people I've talked to, it made it sound like they were being required and forced to be here no matter what. And I'm gonna read this just to kind of let the people at home understand what the change back in May. It says that "All meetings of internal committees shall occur in the Bradley County Commission Room of Bradley County Courthouse unless the chairperson of said committee articulates the necessity of a meeting to occur at another designated location." That means if you need to have a field trip, you need to go somewhere, nobody's asking you to be required when, you know, if you're on the road department and you've got to go out and you've got to look where they're putting a tile or doing whatever, those sort of things, looking at a road situation or whatever, that you're required to meet here, and you got to draw a map and do all that silliness. That's not, that's not, that's not what was implied here. It's that all they have to do is articulate that. In other words, let people know that that's, that that's the reason it won't be here, and then to also let them know where it's gonna be. The new one, you know, "All meetings of internal committees shall occur in the Bradley County Commission Room of the Bradley County Courthouse or as designated by the committee chairperson." So, what we've done is taken the responsibility of the whoever wanted this changed, and now we've put it on the committee chairperson, which decreases, once again, the transparency of what we're seeing here. Taxpayers paid for this equipment. This equipment right here was at taxpayer expense. Well-used money, I believe. I think it's a great idea. And you know what? That was used not only for your meetings, but that, you know, evolves itself into what we're seeing here, that we have all of the government transparent, which we've talked about over and over again, transparency, you know? That's what we're trying to increase. That's what we want to see. We're not asking for anyone who is a, you know, to step outside the box. We're just saying, if it inconveniences somebody who's paid by the taxpayers, it is more important that the taxpayer not be inconvenienced. That's all we're asking, transparency. We've been asking for that from the beginning, and we just want a continuation of that. This addition that was changed in May hasn't even been fully implemented or used to the full degree where somebody could say, well, that's not been successful. How do you know? You haven't even used it enough to even know. So, I just think it's a slap in the taxpayer's face to come forward and allow somebody who's paid by the government with taxpayer money to change a system that reduces the transparency of those paying the bills. Not, to me, it's not that hard, and I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see. Commissioner Oliver.
Mr. Rawls, could I ask you a question, please? Back when you were on the county commission, and you had all these different committees that you met with, was there ever a problem about transparency out of the three or four years you served on the committees that you served on?
You know, it's always easier to look back in retrospect and say, now you see where there was issues. But, you know, even the appearance of an impropriety should be considered a problem.
Was there any conspiracies during your term as a commissioner?
In the sheriff's office, yes, there was. Absolutely.
The audit committee, we had a finding because you were chairman of that and didn't have a meeting. But other than that, we didn't have any problems, obviously.
Can I, can I explain that, though? Because the audit committee hadn't been meeting before, and when I came in, then the audit committee, all of a sudden, had to be assembled and put together. And yes, there was a finding because I was a couple of days late. That's, that's on me. But it wasn't for lack of transparency. And I, it's interesting you bring that up, and yet, we had, you know, other situations with a previous commissioner that is never, was never addressed until forced to be addressed. But I do think that doing things that bring transparency take all of the impropriety appearance out of it. Nobody can complain about it. Nobody can see what the situation is. And I think, especially with departments like the sheriff's department and the road department, this adds a lot because there's no department that has more misinformation than the road department. I've had people ask me questions about things, and it's like, that's not even how it works. That's not even a county road. That's a state road. The county can't do anything for that. So, these things, I think a lot of these problems would be resolved if you had people having access to these meetings without having to travel all over the place.
But you do agree that all committee meetings are open to the public, regardless of where they're at?
Yeah, but I don't think that people should be inconvenienced.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ledford.
Mr. Chairman, I know there's a few more people here that want to speak, and I don't know if any of the other commissioners are gonna call those folks or not. I know one lady, so if it's okay with the chair, would like to ask, I think Ms. Gleason wants to speak.
Ms. Gleason, please.
Deborah Gleason, fourth district. Thank you, Commissioner. I did have another commissioner that was going to recognize me, but that's okay. I did speak with one of the other commissioners in my district, so some of my questions have been answered, but they know that I'm still firm on how I feel about the transparency and how this is handled. Addressing the issue regarding a vote to change the transparency of the commissioners' meeting, might I mention that I requested from two of my commissioners in District Four that they recognized me during this meeting before a vote was taken so that I might express my concerns for this motion. I did not hear back from either one regarding my request. It might be that they didn't check their emails. It's hard to believe that there was even a motion, which was seconded, to reconsider the transparency of the Bradley Commission meetings, which are now required to be held here in the commissioner's room of the courthouse, a change that was made just a short while back and for which monies were spent to ensure that the people would be able to observe if they were not able to physically come to the meetings, and also as a means of public record. So, therefore, we now have at least two commissioners who wish to disenfranchise those who are working to support themselves and/or families, or those with physical handicaps or lack of transportation, in addition to the rest of the taxpayers, by tearing down the bridge that helped to ensure transparency and truth to we, the people. Are there, are two commissioners in someone's back pocket? Several taxpayers told you two years ago that it won't be business as usual. We, the people, are not going away. We, the people, demand transparency. We, the people, are going to tear down the good old boys' club and help foster a county government established for the people and by the people. If you choose to vote yes for this proposed motion, which is against we, the people, be prepared to suffer the consequences of that action. All of you who voted for tax increases and now choose to vote in favor of this motion to take away transparency, be advised, this will seal your fate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Thompson.
You know, we talk about transparency, and I was one of those commissioners that didn't answer your email because I didn't see it until late. And I told her that this morning. But you talk about transparency. If you want transparency, if you've got a problem with the road department, and they've got a committee meeting, you need to be there. It wouldn't hurt you to be at the road department. It always has been like that. If we've got people with problems, they would be there at that meeting. And they would, and we would try to answer their questions. And same with the sheriff's department or anywhere else that we decide to have a meeting. This is left up, according to this, what we're saying is left up to the chairman. And I think the chairman could make that decision as, if it could be here, if there's no problem at all, why, there's no problem having a meeting here. But if there's a problem within the road department, sheriff's department, or wherever, that we need to have a meeting, why, I think it's more transparent there than it is anywhere because all the information is there. So, that's what I think about transparency when it comes to having meetings, committee meetings.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anything else, Commissioner Ledford?
No, Mr. Chairman. Oh, there's another young lady back there that wants to speak. That's okay. I just don't want to take everybody else if somebody else has or gonna call these folks up.
If it's on, no problem. Come on up. Let me explain the policy here, so there's, in the future, there's no misrepresentation. Everyone has the opportunity at the end of the meeting to have five minutes to speak, and we're gonna start enforcing that a little tighter. Outside of that, which is being done today, you have to be recognized by a commissioner to get an extension of that amount of time. And in this particular case, hopefully, we're, if this is on that transparency thing, speak your piece, but please be brief.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jessica Hedgecock, and I am in the fourth district. And I did send both of my commissioners an email asking to be recognized, and I did fail to get a response from either of them. Now, we did, we did just hear a response from one of those commissioners. Now, I will tell you, over the past eighteen months, I have written my commissioners and have only gotten one response. So, has somebody misplaced the ability to check emails for eighteen months or a year when they're asking to be recognized to speak? It's important that we have transparency because it is obvious and evident that what is going on in our country and in our county is deceitful. We must have transparency, and in the Bible, it talks about John, John three nineteen and twenty. This is the verdict. Light has come into the world, but people loved darkness instead of light because their deeds were evil. Everyone who does evil hates the light and will not come into the light for fear that their deeds will be exposed. We're just asking to make it simple, keep it simple, stupid, have all the meetings here, and let it be transparent with video. I have five children. I can't afford to get a babysitter every single time that I want to be present and to be educated. I have the right to be informed. So, am I gonna get in trouble from the state when I lug my five children here because they're not present, doing their homeschool like they should be? I have the right to be informed. Now, whether it's through making phone calls and getting meetings set up with a mayor or having a conversation with a commissioner, but when we have people that are public servants that don't have the courage to have tough conversations, we lack the transparency that we need to make great change. And I ask each and every one of you to have courage, to have a spine, and say, you know what? We've got nothing to fear on this. Let's just be open to the public. Let's do the right thing. Thank you very much, gentlemen and ma'am.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Ledford, do you have anyone else, please?
Mr. Chairman, let me be clear on this. I know, I understand that the communication from the audience is at the end of the meeting. I understand that these folks here, I think, want to speak on an item that we're gonna vote on, and that's the reason I voted, I asked them to come up. I want to make sure that I'm clear, that I know the rules and I know when communication is, so.
No problem there. My comment pertain to the audience more than anything else. You know, all of us know the rules. But that's all right.
So, I'm gonna skip it on down, but I do, I know there's a couple more folks that want to speak, but let someone else, if they will, call those folks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Chairman. The six districts doing well. I want to thank Amanda Pills over at KAB. We had our tire take back on Saturday. Had over three hundred tires taken. Hopefully, that'll be some tires that won't get thrown out on the roadways. I want to thank Sheriff Lawson for being there, him and his wife, and Mylon Blake out there, too. So, everybody that was involved in this, thanks for coming out and making it very successful. Thank you, Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also related to Keep America Beautiful, earlier in the year, Keep America Beautiful applied for a grant on behalf of Bradley County and the city of Cleveland, and they found out early last week they were awarded that grant. That grant will afford the residents of Bradley County the opportunity to dispose of large items, appliances, mattresses, things like that, that would cost you extra to dispose of at the landfill. There will be a day set aside, kind of like the tires were this past Saturday, where you'll have the opportunity to come and dispose of those items. So, there'll be additional details coming in the future for the date and the location of that event, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Slater. Commissioner Goins.
Tracy Dickerson that would like to say something that's on the Rule Eight.
Tracy, please. Repeat your name and.
Tracy Dickerson, District Six. And I'm also here because I believe that the transparency issue that you're gonna vote on today is exceptionally important. And I respect the fact that it may be inconvenient to come here and have a meeting that can be transparent because it is published and available to the public. Since May, almost fifteen hundred views of the committee meetings have happened because of the transparency that was made available at that May meeting. And that is really important. Like Ms. Hedgecock said, there are people who cannot travel here. And I respect the fact that you can go to a committee meeting and you can attend the meeting wherever it is. But some of those committee meetings happen in offices that don't allow for a bunch of people to attend, and they may have concerns, or they may not be able to attend because they have physical limitations or transportation limitations. By having them here, by having them published and available to your citizens, we have an opportunity to actually gather our data and speak to you from a position of knowledge, of understanding, because we've done our research, and to take that away is disheartening. I'm sure it was inconvenient to your families, to your work, to have your election process, your campaigns, but you went through that inconvenience so that you could have a position where you would uphold the rights of your citizenry. That is your main obligation, is to uphold our rights, and one of them is transparency. And I hope that when you do come to vote on this issue, that you will consider that this is important to us. We are members of your community. We feel very strongly about this. When have you ever seen this many people get up and speak about one item? It's important to us, ladies and gentlemen. Please, don't shut us out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Commissioner Goins?
That's all I have.
I agree. Commissioner Thompson. Pulling number C. That's the resolution on the HCI. Okay.
Okay. Right. Okay. Is that it? Commissioner Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been spending a little time driving through the cemeteries and take a look at what's happening there, and I, I can say that lots being done. The one on Northley Highway and the one on Coy Street are all being attended to at this point. I talked with a family member that was also working on a grave up at Sunset, and she was very pleased with what was happening, but also realized there, there weren't enough staff to do all that needs to be done there. I think that's in the upper now to be working with the individual that owns this property and is benefited by the funds that have come from those that have left their loved ones there. So there's a lot of movement going on at this point. Let me just speak to one, this one issue. I've been on this board commission twelve years. This is probably the most transparent public group you could deal with. We give you the opportunity to do just this, and all we're looking at in this is tweaking what is, what the majority of this commission did at that meeting you're talking about in May. And transparency, for the most part, most of us have a telephone number. I'd, I'd take calls, and most of us take the calls and deal with what we need to do. But this is a tweaking, I think, from the member that presented that, of this resolution to not only have what we have here. There's a time we need to go to the juvenile center. There's a time we need to go to the justice center. We need to go through the jail. We need to do some things that you've elected us to do, and it's not really easy for his staff or the staffs that we mentioned here to come here and make that meeting so for what we're needing to make decisions on. As far as transparent, I think I'd match up this group and the, the group that preceded this current commission with what we tried to do. We're the ones that put that there. We're the ones that use the taxpayer dollar to do that and to say that we're being in the dark and to, all of us run for this office. All of us go out to be elected. We've had several members that weren't elected because of the decisions they do. We understand that. You don't have to come to a, to a pulpit here and tell us that we're to be elected and it's up to the public to do that. My 7th District knows everything that I've made decisions on because I have communications within it, and I think all of our elected officials do that. But we, we try to be as, as transparent as we possibly can within this world, and that's up there because of this commission. The media has access to us, and anytime we're going to any setting, this gentleman right here is going with us and reporting to you what's happening to there. As detailed as Grant will be, he'll present that to you all. So we're not, we're not hiding decisions. This is a tweaking of the transparency you've asked for. It's not changing transparency. It's moving it to the opportunity for a, a, a director of a department to address to us as chairman to do that and saying to go to the chairman first, this is, that's saying go, go to the director of the, the committee that we're, organization we're dealing with. So I mean, we're, we're, we're not changing, even if, I'm not particularly, I'm not planning to support this issue. I think we keep it as it is, and the majority probably will do that as well. I think it needed to be tweaked by one of the members, and we give him the opportunity to do that. So to, to make this a transparency issue, you have every opportunity to speak, and we, we give, we spend hours giving opportunity to speak. So I, I, I take issue with that. I think you have a right to speak, and we give you that. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioner Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All's well in the third. I do want to take an opportunity to recognize Commissioner Thompson. We were at the County Commission Association last week, and, and I believe, Commissioner Thompson, you had twenty-five years of service, is that right? Twenty-eight, sorry, I didn't want to cut you out of three, but twenty-eight years of service to, to the community, and they, they recognized that, so that was a neat thing to be a part of, and definitely want to tell you, I appreciate your service. Thank you.
That all, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. Finance Committee will need to meet this Thursday in this room at nine AM. We have a few things we've got to take up. Normally, we meet on the first Monday, but we've got some timing things with the schools and stuff like that. So Finance Committee meeting this Thursday at nine AM in this room. Second, Mr. Chairman, just some dates also to keep aware of. The last day to register to vote to participate in the November election is October the 11th. So if you have not registered to vote or you need to transfer your voter registration into Bradley County, October 11th is the day that you need to have circled on your calendar. If you're going to turn eighteen before the election, you still have to have your paperwork done before October 11th. They know that you're going to be eighteen before the election, and they'll go ahead and register so that you can participate. And obviously, the election starts with early voting on October the 19th at the three locations that we typically have. I just want to make those dates aware, Mr. Chairman. Last, to Commissioner Mason, Keep America Beautiful on Saturday, that was a good day we had, beautiful, nice, cool morning. Just so everybody knows, no tax dollars were used in this process. So I had somebody ask about the tax dollars. There were no tax dollars used whatsoever this past Saturday. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Blake. Commissioner Alford.
Second district's doing well. I was glad to go by the ballpark the other day and did finally see some dirt being moved for the new pickleball courts that hopefully we can get done before winter sets in. Thank you.
Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to talk about something that I'd talked about back in July with the prior commission. This is more of less an educational portion for the new ones that are coming in. I, I was a chair, and it looks like I'm going to be the Chair of EMS again or the Emergency Service. At the time, we were having an issue with ambulances being held, no other way to put it, but hostage at some of the hospitals. So what we'd looked at was changing it to where, that we would charge or make a charge for hospitals that after the first thirty minutes, it'd be a $300 charge. Thereafter, every hour would be another $300. Now, that's pro-rating that also. I'd put it on the, as far as the agenda, it was put on there, and I took and pulled it just to give more time to see what we could, what would happen over time. Now, that was on July 18th, and here we are, nine, it's September 14th. I pulled those records to see how the hospital was doing, and I realized the hospital's going through a little bit of turmoil and shorthanded, but so are we, and we're expected to work the same as if we're not. But I pulled those records to see where we would be at if we were charging. At this point, it would be $97,800 that the hospital would owe us. Now, to explain how this works, what happens is the ambulance arrives at the hospital. As soon as they stop, not pulling into the property, but as soon as they stop, they call in to the 911 center and let them know they're on scene. Then they go and they wait. They wait for the hospital to give a time that they can transfer that patient to their, their hospital bed. As soon as that's done is when they call in and tell them that the patient has been transferred. We have a documentation of when it happened, when they got there, and when it's, the transfer started. Any other time that they may be there to get whatever is not included in that time. So if they hang around afterwards for whatever reason, this is, that is not calculated into that time at all. We do, as far as I know, we have a following meeting coming up, and that is something that we will be discussing. I think the mayor's already been talking to the hospital about it. But I did have an email sent to me of one of these calls to explain this process. However, it's, it's over an hour long, and I don't think anybody wants to listen to somebody go in saying we're, we have a patient on scene, and then an hour later here that that patient has been transferred. So my point is, is that as it's, as issues go, their issues have not gotten much better at all, have not gotten worse over this time. So I look forward to our meeting to see how it goes. Thank you, and hopefully I'd educate everybody on, the new ones on what was going on with that.
Thank you very much. Also, for the new commissioners, over the past six to eight years, every year, the projected income for the ambulance service has been off about a million dollars. I don't know how the mayor has handled that. I, he's, but he has, and I congratulate him. But there has to be something done with this. We project our budget on income, and then you have one entity off over a million dollars almost annually. That creates challenges, and the mayor, in some way, has picked up the pieces. And I just wanted to add a little clarity, and if these ambulances, keep in mind, are stored up there at the hospital emergency room, up to four of them have been up there, we have to call an ambulance sometimes in from Polk County to take care of the issue. So it's, it's a serious problem. Commissioner Beatty, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I went out in the 1st District and talked to a bunch of people about these, all the meetings and stuff, and most of my people out in there, really, all I talked to, they think they ought to be left in the commission before they can get in and out better, and they don't have to run, you know, to the road department or sheriff department or whatever. I talked to several people about it since our last meeting. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on down to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Hughes made the motion. Second is Commissioner Mason. Call the roll, please.
Alfred, Cry.
Yes.
Blake, Collins.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you very much. Agenda item, first is number A. Commissioner Hughes, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution authorizing Bradley County Mayor to negotiate and enter into a subscription agreement for a period of three years with regroup for public emergency notification software for the, for the use by the Bradley County Emergency Management Agency for the amount not to exceed $9,400 or $429.45. Mr. Chairman, I put that in formal question.
Do I have a second, Commissioner Slater? Do I have any questions, comments? Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, mayor, is, this is the same company we've been dealing with, correct?
Yes, this is the same one we've been doing the last year or two, yes.
So the process of sign up so you can receive these notifications has changed, or is still the same as it was?
Right.
All right.
Anyone else have any question, comments? Call the roll, please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake, Collins.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
The next agenda item is number B. Commissioner Blake.
Number B. Resolution appropriate $779,272 for broadband expansion projects in Bradley County to Volunteer Electric Corporation as allowed by conditions in terms of the American Rescue Plan Act from the funds allocated by Resolution 2021-50 and authorize Bradley County Mayor to execute an agreement with Volunteer Electric Corporation regarding and said appropriations. Put that in formal motion. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a second now.
Commissioner Blake and Commissioner Winters was on the second. Call the roll, please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake, Collins.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Item C was withdrawn. Item D, Commissioner Thompson.
Okay, I guess everybody knows what this motion is by now. But anyway, it's a resolution to amend Rule 8 of the Bradley County Rules and Procedures Regarding Meetings of Internal Standing Committees. And I'd like to say before I bring this for a motion that, first of all, there's been several occasions, I don't know if y'all remember or not, that we had the ambulance service, we had to go there on count of maintenance, we had to go and look at the maintenance problems they had, and we had the meeting there, and it was very knowledgeable, knowledgeable is what we needed to do. And same, same with the road department or anything else. We've got problems, and a lot of times they have new equipment we want to see, that's, that's part of the meeting, and hopefully that it will make us more knowledgeable, knowledgeable to where we can have better answers for the commission here. This is strictly left up, what it, what it says, it's strictly, strictly left up to the chairman of that committee to make the decision as to where to have the committee meeting, not to keep from being transparent, but to hope it will help us to be more knowledgeable since we are at, at that location. And basically, that's what it's for. It's not, if, if this commission don't want to do that, that's why I'm going to bring it up for a vote for. If they do, that's fine. But it's just, we've always had meetings at locations, and it's always been helpful. And if we have one at, at the jail, and we want to go through the jail or whatever, we've got problems down there, that, we've always done that. And we're there where we can do it. And we're not, by no means being not, not to where you don't understand what's going on. We're not trying to hide nothing from nobody in this county. And y'all need to understand that, that we're, we're just as transparent as we can be and always have been. And I've been here many years, and, and we've never had a problem with it before, and I don't know what the problem is now. But anyway, I'm going to put that motion on the floor and let this commission vote on it. And I make the motion.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Goins, wait a second. Commissioner Alford.
Yes, Mr. Howard, would you explain to me the difference of what we're doing right now compared to this resolution?
To this res, there's no difference.
No difference. So.
That's, the only thing it is, is left up to that chairman of where he wants to have it.
Well, that's kind of where it is now, isn't it?
Yes.
Then there's no need for the motion. Is, is there?
No need for the motion, the way I look at it.
Mr. Winters.
That's the question I, that's the question I've had, it, what, what is the difference of the two? And I thought what was in the original motion is that the chairman of the, of the committee, as well as the director or sheriff or whoever's in charge, would ask for that, and then we work together on that. So it seems to me that.
Right. Well, that's what a chairman's here for, and they can, if, if we go to Tom Collins, we go to the sheriff or everywhere we go, and they say, you, do you want us to have a meeting there? Would it be effective, more effective if we had a meeting there? And they said yes, then that would be the chairman's decision to make it. And it, it don't, I don't have a problem having a meeting here, but I also don't have a problem having a meeting at some of these locations to where we need to be sometimes to find out what's really going on.
But, but since May, we've been able to still do that. We've been able to still do that since May, where we could, as a committee chair, be advised by the, the director of that department that they needed it. So we have already been doing that since May. So this is not really a change to that at all in the motion, right? Or is it? That's, that's what we can.
Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Multry, for sending this out, that you send us our minutes on Friday. So over the weekend, I had time to read over it. The first resolution from Rule 8 stated, as, as was stated earlier, there are eighteen, everything is the exact same from the previous one to this one. Eighteen words are different. It changes to seven new words as, or is designated by the committee person. The previous one says, unless the chairperson of said committee articulates the necessity of a meeting to occur at another designated place. So I guess my question is, is that we just don't have to articulate anymore, but, or can chairpeople not articulate, and that's why we need to change it to where it is designated by the committee person? I'm just curious of, of what the commissioner who put this on was really trying to do because it's, to me, it sounds like it's the exact same. The only thing we're really losing is articulating what we want to do.
So if we vote no on this resolution, that means it stays in this room, and the chairman does not get to decide that it don't.
No, that's wrong.
No.
The chairman has the authority under certain circumstances if he wants to have an offsite.
Okay, that's clear to me. That was my misunderstanding, thinking that all meetings had to be held here. So now you're saying it's up to the chairman?
There are circumstances, and I will explain two or three. It's going to come up pretty shortly after the vote.
Okay. Explain them now.
But what we're saying that all meetings would be here, 80% of the meetings to 90% will be in here. It's 10% where there's a need by, it's told to the committee chairman or the, and shared together with that person that's the department head. So we're, that's what we're saying, it seems like it's the same stuff here. That we're, a no to this one would be just staying with the same one we have, which I think still solves the issue.
Anyone else? Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, real quick. If the chairman or chairwoman decides that they need to have a quote-unquote field trip, the public is still invited to attend that meeting. Sometimes we've had to go out to the juvenile, last time I remember, because they needed to replace or fix a wall. We all wanted to see what that wall was going on. But the public is still invited to go there. If I understand it correctly from last week, Commissioner Thompson said that sometimes the new road superintendent likes to take field trips and go out and see roads. How would, how would the road department or road committee facilitate the public still being able to go with all the commissioners to go see all these roads? Would they have to follow in their own car?
Yes.
Okay.
That works out, yeah.
Just checking, thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Anyone else?
I, real quick, Mr. Chairman. And this is just for the new guys, like, we've talked a bunch today about the new commissioners. So is there a rule, or is there a thing in place that when we notify the general public of these meetings, that we set the place ahead of time? So is there, just to know that, right? Like, whether it will be here, or the sheriff's department, the road department, that will be notified previously?
Lori does that automatically. It has been for the last several years, given the location.
And where is that posted at, just for clarification?
Lori, where is she?
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify.
Anybody else? Anyone else? Call the roll, please.
Alford.
No.
Cry.
No.
Blake.
Nope.
Collins.
No.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Goins.
No.
Slater.
No.
Mason.
No.
Ledford.
No.
Rogers.
No.
Winters.
No.
Beatty.
Oh.
Hughes.
No.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
I'll change mine.
So that's nobody in favor, 13 opposed and one absent.
Thank you very much. Before we go on, I'd like to make a comment or two. For those of you in the audience that have been around me or know me, I have said from day one, the more sunshine you put on a subject, the greener it gets. I have no problem with transparency. There are situations where there will not be transparency, and that'll be lawsuits, litigation, and personal means on disciplinary action and things like that. The other thing I want to make sure, as chairman, I, we have five new commissioners. None of them, I don't think, have been inside that jail. I intend to ask the chairman of those committees to have an orientation at the jail, at the justice center, also at the Pi Center, also at the road department. So there will be three meetings that we will have offsite of this commission room. But these five new commissioners need to see all that equipment down there in the road department. Many of them haven't taken a tour or seen the Pi Center, which is the thing of the future on education. And God help us, they haven't seen the jail. We don't run a Holiday Inn Express over there, but we, we have a functional facility that is clean, and they need to see it. I believe communications from the audience. Come on up, Commissioner Ross.
Thank you all. And the just-spoken commissioner is absolutely right. I really wish that everyone could have seen the jail before the current sheriff took over, because I can tell you that what you're going to see now is drastically different. You know, I mean, and that has been a monumental job on his part. Kudos where kudos are deserved. And you need to go over there and see what they fighting they're up against, you know? I mean, I don't know personally how those correctional officers tolerate what they have to tolerate, but that's an area that has been a huge improvement. And I think that, you know, you need to go and look and see what they're up against every day. You know, I mean, because it's extremely important. That is a tough job dealing with out-of-the-ordinary people. And, you know, kudos to them for doing it. But that, that's, if you don't go to any other committee meeting, that's one you need to go offsite to see. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the audience would like to speak? It's all right, sir, I can identify your name, please, and your address.
Dan Jones, 905 Forest Place in West. Help Pat high for me. Welcome to the guys. Wanted to come up and thank the folks that are not here. Have some concerns, and I really need your help. There were some really disturbing things that happened in Texas school. I've talked to folks. Education. I've reached out to my board members. And I've talked to, talked to the sheriff. I don't know how many of you have ever carried a gun for a living? Anybody? I have. I was an armed security officer. Got to work with the sheriff. Park County, Knoxville. And along with Mr. Cry. Don't mention names, but served in the military. You know, thankfully, for 24 years I served, I never had to go to combat. Not one. I was a part of the cold. When I was an armed security officer, I was in the hospital I was working at. There was shootout between some deputies and a young man I was serving with, the national deputy. He didn't survive it. That spilled over into the hospital emergency room when I was working. That's a pretty tough situation, even for somebody who thought there she was. Let's imagine. Somebody comes at that door. How many folks in this room are going to be? And we've got two officers. Those SROs out there in our schools, what do they carry? They carry a sidearm. Let me tell you, that is, does not compete with an assault rifle whatsoever. We're not going to do something about the guns. We have got to do something to protect our students. I have children that work in these schools. I have a granddaughter who goes to these. I don't want them to have to spare blood on themselves to stay alive. And you know, you know, with these things happening, we just brush them off and go on like it's, it's like some video or something, like it'll never happen here. Those folks in Uvalde thought that. They thought that, never happened. There was one instance where a security, an armed security officer came to the fence of those folks at a grocery store in New York. He died. We got to help these guys. I don't want an SRO to have to sacrifice their life to my children, my grandchildren. It's just unfair to them. I don't know what we got to do. We're not going to do something about the guns. We need to have more security at our schools. Bulletproof glass, metal detectors. Have you seen the, have you seen the Queen's funeral? Have you seen the amount of security they got? If you want to go to get on a plane, what do you got to do? Man, they're going to, they're going to protect you. We got to do that for our most prized possession, our children. They are our family. One other thing. This room is full of beautiful, talented, intelligent ladies that were more up here. I think they can make their own healthcare choices. That's what I believe. I don't believe that we need to be telling them what to do with their bodies. And the last thing I want to say is, is as a veteran, we pledge to that flag. We pledge that flag of the United States of America. There is a monument in a prominent place in our town that is a monument to sedition. Still standing, right there. We pledge to that flag. We didn't pledge to any kind of political banner. We pledged to that flag. And I pray for you guys by name. Every, every night, for the last two years, I have, I took my pastor's advice, and I've, I've started fasting from news. I don't watch Fox. I don't watch CNN. I don't watch MSNBC. I don't watch it. You will continue to be in my prayer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones, a little additional information here. It is not in the public interest and our children's interest for we to publicly announce what we have security of for our students in the classroom. I just have handed over officially today the chairmanship of the Education Committee, and I can assure you that we, we might not be, not penetrable, but since Sheriff Gilli was sheriff, we've had, I think it's going back to that regime, we've had a SRO in every school, which the public might not be aware of. Since about three years ago, I think, or maybe longer, we have had three SROs in the county high schools, one at the gate, two inside. All right, we're now working on putting two SROs. I don't know where the money's coming from, but we're working to put two SROs in the middle schools. We have cameras all over the place. We have glass, be better than your dang windshield if you busted it. But I won't go into the other issues, but I, I would like to tell you that we can handle our, SROs will be able to handle that AR-15 pretty effectively here down the road. But I, I just wanted to let that know. We have no business telling the public openly what our security measures are at these schools. Anyone else want to speak from the audience? All right, announcements. Next meeting, work session, September 26, 7:00 p.m., Bradley County Courthouse. Upcoming events, Finance Committee, September the 22nd, 9:00 a.m., Bradley County Courthouse. Downtown, dine around, September the 22nd, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. downtown. Anything else?